Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the city council meeting. Please have a seat. Time for flag sleuth. We'll have four. If you've got enough money. Okay. I can't hear if this thing's working. Well, Keith's not going to be here. So Brenda, Brenda's here, you think?
Yeah, she is.
And Rick, is Rick here? Okay. For the record, Keith, I know's not going to be here. His son's got some, he's getting an award for diversity, champions or something.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah. And Rick's here, good. And Brenda is here too.
She's here somewhere.
So, just Keith.
Here she comes.
Good. Okay, we will start on our agenda. Item A, which is the comprehensive plan on the adoption of the Center for Innovation and Technology. And this would be John or Jana. Aaron, Aaron, can you get her mic louder, please?
Thank you. I'd like to just introduce the three items on the agenda. So, the first one, the subarea plan, second, planned action ordinance, and third, the amendments to the public zone. And they have been deliberately placed in that order because the subarea plan is what begins the process, the planned action ordinance is reflective of what happened, or what is discussed in the plan, in the subarea plan, and the planned action EIS. And then finally, the amendments to the public zone will reference the adopted, the approved planned action ordinance. So with that, and, oh, one more thing. Planning Commission looked at each one individually. There's a separate ordinance for each one of those items, so you'll be taking action on them individually. And with that, I'd like to just turn it over to Bill Hager with Maal Foster Nalangi, and they, he will go through the subarea plan.
These are first reads?
These are, yes. Thank you.
So we're, we're going to listen to them, try to understand them, and then, is it the next meeting they'll be planning?
Yes. The next meeting is next Wednesday evening will be second read, and Planning Commission has recommended approval of all three items as presented to you in your packets.
Okay. Bill, first.
Thank you, Jana. Actually, Mr. Stringer is going to start it out. We'll tag teammate here. We'll try to keep it brief.
Okay. Yes, and thank you again, council members. It's been an honor to be able to help the city and the port and the county work through the process of developing this master plan. We just want to give you the overview of it. We've briefed you before on the major contents of the subarea plan. We want to talk to you about how that's refined and been articulated in this, in this subarea plan. It's up for your review. To briefly look back and think about how we got here, I want to recap a few things. You know, it was back in November of 2013 that the Department of Enterprise Services, the current owner of the property, invited the community together to think about what could the future of that site be. The state had put it up as a surplus property back in 2010, had not received any realistic offers on it, and then turned around to think with the community about what do, what do we want to see as the local constituency here? And the city, in partnership with Skagit County and the Port of Skagit, responded back to the Department of Enterprise Services, saying that we would like to take a look at what would local control, what would a local perspective on this property look like? And they entered into this interlocal agreement. That established these, these key goals that are reflected through the subarea plan. And those main goals were to, one, encourage private sector investment. Currently, the site is owned by the state, and there are either public or nonprofit entities up there. We want to promote public access to the site. As you all are familiar with, the site is currently restricted for pu, for access because of privacy and security concerns. We want to protect the environmentally sensitive areas, especially Hanson Creek, where there's been such a large investment in natural resource restoration, to acknowledge the historic significance of the site. It's listed on the National Register of Historic Places, both for buildings and the actual landscape itself. And, and last but not least, to acknowledge and respect the interests of the Ever Skagit Tribe as neighbors to this facility. As I mentioned, those goals were articulated by the, by the council, county commission, the port commission at the onset of this, and they're reflected verbatim in the subarea plan. They've been brought up to the community for public, for comments, for input, and they've stood really well up to the, to that public review. In 2014, that interlocal agreement led to a adaptive review study of the property. There was, the port was able to obtain funding from the Department of Ecology to conduct kind of a due diligence study of thinking about what could this property be, looking at the physical characteristics of it, infrastructure, the site, topography, the utilities, the natural resources on the site, as well as environmental conditions. And we went out to the community at that point and had several open workshops, where just asked community members to come, let us know what they thought, what their visions and ideas were for the future. And those ideas, again, are articulated back in this planning document. And as we completed that, that study, we identified some recommended next steps that included creating the subarea plan, pursuing annexation, which has been conducted, and doing the planned action environmental review. And then in this 2015, there's been a number of actions conducted. The property was annexed, and that was completed in September. We spent the better part of the year preparing the subarea plan and the planned action environmental impact statement that reviews the potential development of the site based on the subarea plan. We've recently gone through the Planning Commission review, as Jana mentioned, and are now bringing this forward as complete documents to city council for your consideration and action next week. And in parallel to this, the port commission has also been taking action. They've been in negotiations with the state Department of Enterprise Services about potential transfer of the property, and the port commission has adopted a set of design guidelines so that as the port develops in the property, there'll be architectural guidelines that align with its national historic designation to protect that historic integrity. So Bill, can you describe to us kind of what this physical plan layout looks like?
Thank you, Mike. Well, throughout the EIS process, we had a number of alternatives that we looked at, from a no action up to a high action. And this is the preferred alternative that the EIS has embraced. It, it has the most square footage of any of the alternatives because in our environmental review, there was not that much difference between the medium and high in terms of the key areas because of the way that this campus layout has been designed. So at a maximum buildout, there could be up to six, or 950,000 square feet. It's a phased development, and it will honor the existing leases. We wanted to maximize the economic potential for the community, and that's why we've, we raised it to the maximum square footage there. But it does keep intact the renovation and construction, if feasible, of the core, the Olmsted, original Olmsted concept. And as Mike mentioned, the port has approved some design guidelines to assist in that. The industrial uses are oriented, the new industrial uses that we see in coming to the campus, both in the southern tier and in the northern tier away from the core area. And over time, any non-contributing buildings to the original layout would potentially be removed. And of course, again, over time, this is going to be a long-term phased development. We see public access being brought back in throughout the campus, except in areas where, for safety reasons, because of the assembly and manufacturing, it may not be appropriate. And this is a computer rendering of how it looks like with the first phase of development along the southern influence area. The architects and historians really tried to work carefully honoring the original concepts and minimizing any impact to natural systems and keep the original design as it was intended to be. And what that does is really minimize the amount of intrusion to the site and to the surrounding area. Just a location, of course, it's in the northeast here, and it does not include the residential areas that were annexed along to it. Some people had, have been asking that. No, it's just the campus area that this plan involves. So, the plan has, Mike has said, has been developed over the last year and a half, and it really embodies three main things. It creates this vision, this mixed-use vibrant development for the site. It creates broad policies, and it organized permitted uses within discrete land use areas that you'll see here in a second. So again, really quickly running through this is that we really see that this could be an intellectual and technology center with assembly of, of those products as they're being designed in the core, to be assembled and manufactured in the fringe area. We really would like to see the historic campus continue if it's economically feasible, and the port and the state are working towards that. And again, introducing public access back into the site. So this is basically a land use map within this land use plan, and it's been very important to organize the uses within this to protect the natural systems and the open space. So you can see the green area, which is primarily just the access and open space and preservation. It does not only the protection of the natural resources out there, but it provides the residential areas a buffer from the more intense activities that would be occurring within the main campus. We see the blue areas as being the support areas for the main campus core, the original campus core, which is in the, in the middle. There is only one primary access that we found through the EIS that was needed for the site. That is at the existing access. We had been speaking earlier of access potentials off of other areas, including Helmick. They're not necessary for traffic. We do need to get an emergency access route to the north of the existing one reestablished in Fruitdale, reconstructed to help disperse the traffic, however. This is the acreage within these land use areas. There's about 50 acres in the historic core, and another 83 in the surrounding influence area, and about 93 in the remaining open space area, for a total of about 225. But as somebody pointed out earlier, even within the core area, we see a lot of open space being left that was part of the original Olmsted design. So the actual square footage is, in terms of open space, is actually more than the 93 acres. You know, these are the uses we've been talking about for a long time, and what they do is they allocate them back towards these three land use zones, if you will. So again, assembly isn't allowed in the core, but it is in the influence area. We see the core being the office, the, the design, and, and the intellectual center of the campus, and the manufacturing in the influence area. And of course, try to keep the open space areas free of any uses except for necessary access utilities and perhaps public parking for trails or whatever for the public in that area.
And it's worth noting that, that in that core area and in the influence area, those public uses that are currently allowed through zoning and currently active on the site are allowed to continue to operate. So this allows that, that phasing over time of the property transition while honoring those existing leases.
A number of policies are in the plan that you'll see as you go through it in more detail. But there, we've done a pretty thorough job through the process of trying to be supportive of the economic revitalization of the campus and allowing importantly, private parties to come in and to invest in this area to help the, not only the economic viability of the campus, but obviously the property tax and other taxes within this, to come back to the community. Support of land use policies, and again, supportive natural resource and transportation policies are all within there, as well as the historic character. I might say during our EIS process, we had suggestions to bolster both the natural resource and some of the historic design policies that we had in there. We brought that forward to the Planning Commission, and I think they're in your, your packets as well. I think we all felt that the existing policies that had been presented in the plan cover those, and really were adequate and covered all the areas that were suggested. So we, the Planning Commission recommended that they not be included, but they are in your packets for consideration if you wish to.
And that covers it. You have extensive documentation in your packet to read the details, but those are the, the essential points of the subarea plan.
And again, in your packet is also an ordinance which would adopt the subarea plan and amend the comprehensive plan.
I don't know if this is the right place to ask, but in your little presentation, you mentioned you keep hearing about, you know, about property taxes. Has anybody ever come up with an estimate of what the city portion of that would be, which I assume is the smallest part of the whole pie?
Uh, no, actually, it's probably the port gets the smallest part of the whole pie the, the way the property taxes are distributed. We have within the EIS, and I can get that information to you either tonight or later online, there is an economic section that we detail the tax, potential tax return at buildout each year for the next 20 years of that. I'm sorry, I don't have that off the top of my head.
I didn't expect you to have it off the top of your head either, so.
It's, it's not, it's not minimal. It will provide a good return. As, the idea of, of this, and you know, if it comes to fruition over time, is that potentially the land would be leased to the state or, or from the state to the port or conveyed, and then leased to a private party who could potentially buy those buildings or construct new buildings. And that's really where you're going to see the property tax potentials from the new construction or the acquisition of, of buildings and, and the renovation of those over time. And you've got almost a million square feet potential there over the next 20 to 30 years, so it, it's.
That was another, what you just mentioned was another one of my questions. When you see industrial areas in Skagit County, it seems like it takes them forever to fill up.
Yeah.
What's, 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 what's the S? I know, because the port said one time they envisioned two building, two buildings, which I assume would be big, in the first five years. So how long is the estimate of how long this thing's going to take? Because I know you've already mentioned 20, 30 years to build out.
Yeah. It is a tremendous amount of inventory for a county this size. I could tell you, you guys are very fortunate to have an interested developer who, who wants to go in and continue his innovation on this campus, because, you know, I've done these in other areas, and it's, it's a unique situation in a unique location, and he just wants to do it because it's here and, and wants to see something happening on that campus. So that, that's a very unusual situation to have, because there, you know, I mean, to be frank, there's other areas where you could assemble and do this stuff probably cheaper and get the product out easier. And you have somebody who's committed to the community, and I can underscore that that is a very important component of this. But to answer your question, the first phase, I think they're looking at this time about two buildings, each about 45,000 to 50,000 square feet, still in the final stages of looking at that. So that would be 100,000, 90,000 to 100,000 in the first year or two is what it's looking like of, of assembly space. Sorry, I got to get different glasses in here. So, and to answer your question in terms of property taxes, after 10 years... Read this, John. It's print's too small.
Okay, so we're looking at the capitalistic expenditures.
So this is just year one, and it keeps going, so.
Well, for, we'll say for after 10 years, Cedar Woolies piece 2.78 rate is 183,500 roughly per year, per year.
So, my other question was, because a lot of people that I talked to think this thing's going to happen overnight. And I try to say, oh, it's going to take a long time, and they get mad at me, tell me I, I don't know anything, you know?
That's why you're up there for.
Yeah, right.
If it happens sooner, that would be great, if, if not only his product continues and he, and he expands, that's great. My experience is that these things start slow, start slow, and, and it takes time. A million square feet is a lot of square feet to, and, and it's a unique situation in that a lot of the existing inventory that's there, the, the buildings need to be renovated. Those are not cost-effective to renovate without a lot of careful planning, thinking, and assistance, and so there's a lot of work to do. And that, that's really the key to this, I think, is those existing buildings, is capitalizing on whatever assistance is out there to offset that margin, to get them back in a, in a manner that's appropriate for those buildings. There, there's like a 50% cost differential more to.
But expect more than that.
To do, it probably will be. But there is that margin that it's, you know, it's easier to build a new building and, and then try to renovate those at this point after this time. So it's a complicated situation, and, and if it goes sooner, great. I think you're probably right.
It'll take time.
It'll take time. And there's a lot of existing leases out there too, you have to remember, that are being honored, and so the state and the port have to work around those as well, so. Oh, I was all two.
Yeah, we went with something closer, alternative three.
Yeah, correct. Yeah.
Okay, so the next item on your agenda is the planned action ordinance. And as Bill and Mike described, the processes that we've been going through have included the subarea plan and a planned action EIS, environmental impact statement. In the partnership, the county, the city, and the port of Skagit decided early on to pursue the planned action EIS approach, because the work as far as the evaluation of impacts for site-specific impacts of a project are done at the planning stage. So typically, well, first of all, a subarea plan and amendment to your comprehensive plan triggers the need for SEPA review. What the decision, the decision being made to go through the planned action EIS, the planned action process requires that an environmental impact statement be prepared, which is a much more thorough environmental review process. And again, rather than looking at things at a programmatic level broadly, you're looking more at the site-specific impacts. So both of those processes, the EIS, planned action EIS and the subarea plan ran parallel. And throughout both, there were a number of opportunities for public review, there were public meetings held, and public comment periods. So at the conclusion of those processes, there is the adoption of the subarea plan, which amends the city's comprehensive plan, and an adoption of a planned action ordinance, which is the requirement for the planned action process. The planned action, planned action process was a tool created back in the early 90s by the state legislature to do, just as I explained, to bring the environmental review, the site-specific review, to have that done early on in the process, in the planning stages, so that when a project comes in for development, it merely comes in for the permit process and no longer requires additional environmental review. So this, of course, would expedite the permit process for applications that comply with the planned action. Typically, a planned action is used for subarea plans, master plans, large projects that are usually built out over phases. So the subarea plan is a good example of how a planned action can be effective. So what is the planned action ordinance? That is the conclusion of the planned action environmental review process. And what the ordinance does is it takes all of the information, compiles everything from the subarea plan in this case, and the planned action EIS, so the impacts, the mitigation measures for those impacts, and incorporates those into the ordinance. It establishes a process by which planned action projects are reviewed, and has conditions that will apply to planned action processes. In this case, we have a decision document referred to as the mitigation decision document attachment A. And that includes the permitted uses within the subarea plan, as well as development standards that would apply. And again, those are taken from the mitigation measures that were used in the environmental impact statement. So this mitigation document will be used in conjunction with, and in some cases, in lieu of, city development standards. Bill mentioned the uses that would be permitted in the, the subarea or the, the center. These are listed in attachment A, as well as conditions, and I've just included a few. What we've done is we've taken the elements that were studied through the environmental review process, listed the impacts and those mitigation measures that will be applied as conditions. In some cases, not all of the elements have mitigation measures, and others they do. So Bill mentioned the historic design, or, excuse me, the design guidelines manual that will be used to look at projects at an earlier point in the permit process by the Port of Skagit, determine their consistency with the, the subarea plan and the design guidelines that have been adopted by the port. Transportation improvements are listed, and those have thresholds attached to them. Specifically with the second building, there are two buildings that have been looked at for the site-specific impacts. Those will occur within the south-west corner of the site, and the improvements to Fruitdale, as well as the entrance improvement, will be required prior to the second building. Recreation, that's touched on as well, as far as participation with the county in developing trails plan and implementing that, and then also seeking grant funds when those are available. And you'll notice in both the environmental impact statement, as well as in your planned action ordinance, that not all projects will qualify as planned actions. So those that did not receive the thorough environmental analysis will not be determined planned actions, and they will require additional environmental review. So really, what, what will that look like? Most likely, we would be looking at impacts to critical areas, wetlands and streams with future development. Again, not that first phase of development that I just spoke about, where we didn't do the analysis, we didn't study those impacts, because frankly, we're not sure where those buildings will go at this point. But that environmental review will be really shortened significantly in that it will focus only on the, the impacts to the wetlands and the stream. It will not go back through the environmental review process all over. It will be a supplement to the existing EIS. The process that will occur when a project is ready to come in for permit review is that they will come in like any other project to the city for a pre-application with the city and all the agencies. The Port of Skagit will be present at that meeting. And the other agencies include typically, the WashDOT is typically present, the different departments within the city, wastewater, transportation, PUD is typically present at those. So they'll go through their list of permits and requirements, just as any other development is required to consider. And then the port will conduct a design review. So again, they'll utilize their design review manual, review the project to ensure consistency with that manual. And then once that's complete, and they've, port has indicated its approval of that process, the applicant can then come into the city with a permit application, submit it to the city. The director makes an administrative determination that it's consistent with the adopted planned action ordinance, and it goes through the building permit process. So that concludes my report on the planned action ordinance. And again, the Planning Commission did review this. They held a public hearing and recommended approval of the ordinance as, as prepared. There was a question about the determination by the director is not being. There was a question about the determination by the director as not being appealable. And really, I go back to the process that we've gone through, which has given the public ample opportunity to review what is being proposed, look at the environmental impacts. So the administrator, or, excuse me, the director's action is merely looking at that project to determine it's consistent with what has already been reviewed pretty thoroughly by the public. Any questions?
Questions or comments?
My only question was, the road, for the road upgrade, what of our, what of our chances, maybe Mark might even know better, what are our chances of getting some of the federal funds to pay for that, that was just passed?
Well, we normally are eligible for some of those federal funds through the SCOG process. It's a competitive process. Our current allocation through SCOG has been already programmed for at least four years. And there'll be another selection this year, however, for future years. And we have been able to bring projects in earlier if they are selected. So chances are pretty good that we can get some of those funds for this project. If there is another Tiger program, they had one again this year, that there may be another one next year, although there'll be a new administration by that time. That's another possibility. Probably the most likely source is the TIB funds, which we were just awarded some for the Jamison project. We'll be able to, and we're actually gearing our design work that we're on right now, are beginning to start, or being eligible, or being ready to apply for that in August of this next year. Especially if Janiki is on board with this project, it's going to be a very, very attractive TIB project. It's going to have a huge economic component with it, as well as the pavement condition and the other things that normally score well. So I'm relatively confident we'll be able to come up with either state or federal funds to rebuild the road.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Go see.
All right. So the last item on your agenda, there are proposed amendments to the public zone. And just really, in summary, what they do, what this will do, because the property is zoned public, is it will reference the adopted planned action ordinance. So all of the uses that are presently within the public zone will remain, and then there will be a reference for those uses as outlined in the planned action ordinance and then the adopted ordinance number.
So you guys have any more comments?
I just got one question. It is, it's kind of been implied that Janiki wants to be the developer of this whole area. Is that true? Is that what I'm hearing? That nod answers my question.
It's true.
And you're not on record. Well, they've sort of been the driver.
So that's it?
That is it, yes.
Well, we will go to, close this, because these are first readings. And we'll go to Mark Freiberger, and he's got a question to ask us. Maybe he can tell a little bit about the TIB funding. I don't know if counsel got...
Yes, I guess the good news first. We did receive notification, and actually, we've gotten the written notifications of awards, both for the Jamison arterial extension project. There was about 1.7 million in TIB funds to support that project, as well as funds under their arterial preservation program for overlay on Ferry Street from Highway 20 to about a block west of Metcalf, and also a short stretch on township, the last piece on township that hasn't been redolled over the last number of years, from Highway 20 down to Waldron Street. And we had applied for four different programs, those two, plus two sidewalk stretches that supported those two arterial projects. The sidewalk on Jamison, south of the modular buildings from Third to the tennis courts, was actually also awarded to us. What TIB did is they just added it into the main project and included it in that. So the final one, the piece on Ferry, was on the old APP site to go from Borsseth to Highway 20. That one wasn't awarded, but three out of four, not too bad.
It's the one I like to write.
Really. And, you know, it's well over $2 million to the city. And the Jamison project in particular, that's huge for that. That fully funds the construction at the current estimate for that project, and it includes that piece of sidewalk. So we're going to have new facilities for the school access, all the way from Third Avenue, basically across roads.
Yeah.
Roads. So that's huge, good news. And I guess I should also pass on that we just found out this afternoon that our application for funding for the Cascade Trail project to complete the stormwater work, which we were a bit short on, for the two trails from Highway 9 to Trail Road, and then Trail Road to Hodgins, that has been recommended by the selection committee for award, and that comes up before the commissioners for selection on next Tuesday, I believe, Monday or Tuesday? Monday, okay. So anyway, that's $220,000 in addition to the TIB work. So we've had a good couple of weeks with our applications, and it's going to allow us to build some quality projects in town this next summer. So also, we're going to keep public works quite busy, as you can probably imagine. So the other matter brought to you tonight is a late item. I apologize, I was on vacation last week and just wasn't able to get this ready in time. This is our much-discussed wastewater treatment plant, structure, and equipment assessment consultant agreement. We've gone through the process of advertising and selecting a good quality consultant to go into our wastewater plant and do a good look at the condition of both our structures and our mechanical and electrical systems on the plant. As we've discussed in the past, we're getting close to our 20-year service life from the last major rebuild of the plant, but we're only at about half of our capacity flow-wise. So under our state permit, we would normally, at a near the 20-year mark, be doing what's called a facilities plan, which would be an extensive look at all aspects of the plant, including capacity and condition and all the rest of that, and beginning the process to design a replacement or an addition to the plant. We don't see that being necessary from a permit aspect now for at least 10 years. That's good in a sense. The other side of it is, though, most of these equipment systems are designed for about a 20-year life, and we're getting close to that. So it looks like we're going to rust out before we reach our capacity limits.
Rust out before you fill up?
And we'll rust out before we fill up. That's right. Good way to state that. And as you know, we've brought before you over the last five years a number of major repairs to that plant. We replaced the UV system four years ago. We've been replacing rotors in our clarifier basin. Three of the four had failed, and we, you approved purchase of the last rotor at the last council session. In addition, our two screw pumps, we've had to replace those. So we've already had some failures, but we want to look at the rest of the systems and come up with a good, solid estimate on how much remaining service life we have for those pieces, and then budget accordingly. We want to verify that our rate structure is adequate for that. We think it is, but we've been kind of operating by the seat of the pants, and I want to give you better information than that. So this particular contract will allow us to do the assessment of the remaining service life of that equipment. There'll be a second stage to this, which is not included in the current $32,000 budget, which we are including in the scope here preliminarily, but I'll have to come back to you with an amendment with a dollar amount after we do get that from the consultant next year. And that will be to look at the plant from a capacity standpoint, and to take a good look at the systems and see if there's anything new out there that might allow us, in a cost-effective manner, to upgrade maybe a piece of equipment here and there to not only extend the life, but to expand the capacity. These plants are constantly being redesigned and tweaked, and so there's most definitely equipment out there that may replace something that we have that would operate more efficiently and for less power cost. So that's the second part. But tonight, this request is to approve a word of the contract for the structure and equipment assessment for the wastewater facility to Brown and Caldwell of Seattle, in a cost not to exceed $32,000. That's our recommendation to you.
So we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the attached professional services agreement number 2015-PS-18 with Brown and Caldwell, Inc. of Seattle, to provide the Seadruly wastewater treatment plant, structure, and equipment assessment project in the amount not to exceed $32,000.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion by Councilmember Limley, a second by Councilmember Galbraith, to authorize the mayor to execute the attached professional services agreement number 2015-PS-18 with Brown and Caldwell Incorporated of Seattle, Washington, to provide the Seadruly wastewater treatment plant, structure, and equipment assessment project in the amount not to exceed $32,000. Any further comments? Discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay. We're done.
Thank you.
Okay, Will. Any comments or anything you guys want to talk, Aaron or John or?
I just give a, since we've got a few extra minutes, Jana and I spent all day yesterday at Microsoft's campus at the Washington STEM Summit, and it was very interesting. They start the day with an astronaut, and they wrap the day up with the governor. He pointed out it was a real letdown by the end of the day. But in between, I think there were about 350 people there, you know, a combination of business leaders, educators, policymakers, scientists, all engaged in the conversation about how to increase science, technology, engineering, and math education opportunities in Washington State. And, you know, one of the slides they put up on the screen is, you know, every college major, and all of the top 15 are applied sciences, every one of which requires some basic proficiency in mathematics to proceed. So it's very relevant. Of course, we were there because Seadruly is, you know, the newest STEM network with, you know, having received a $30,000 planning grant. Michelle Judson was there, working on our behalf, and I think the school district had about six people. Deborah Peterson also was down there with us. So we had a pretty good team from Seadruly. Jana and Michelle, Phil Brockman, Wes, were all there today as well for a more detailed follow-up. And so we're kind of hitting the ground running on this STEM business. Heard the mayor-elect speak at the chamber lunch today, identified STEM initiative as one of his top three priorities going into next year. So as well as working with the school and continuing on some of these projects we're starting. So it's pretty exciting. You'll hear more about STEM as we continue down this path, but it sure seems like Seadruly is in the right place at the right time with the right industry and the right school district, positioned to do something really great for the next generation of students.
Mayor, I should mention in addition, or just as a supplement to our discussion about Fruitdale Avenue, that we have completed the consultant selection process for the design work on that as well. Thank you for participating in that. And Lochner Company of Bellingham, or, excuse me, Bellevue, was selected. It's the same consultant that's designing our Jamison arterial project. We had some good quality applications. It was a fairly hard choice this time, but they did rise to the top, and I'm confident they'll do a good job of designing that project and getting it ready for those grant opportunities this next year. So just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Counsel, anybody wants comment?
I just wanted to say, I missed my chance earlier. I thought we had three points on the Northern State project. But since the early days of, like, was it 2011, we first tried to create a local control of Northern State? I'm just pretty excited that about four or five years now, it's, you know, coming to fruition. So I think it's pretty exciting for Seadruly that it becomes an asset now for the city.
Yeah. I remember you, Doug, in the race car. Here we are.
That's what, that's what caused this to happen.
Yeah.
Us? Was it, was it you, me, and Tony? Aren't we, didn't we go down there and meet with the general administration at that time?
We made a trip. In fact, I ran into at the STEM summit. You'd be surprised who all was there, but Nova Gatman was there, used to be Senator Hoggins legislative aide, now is working for the Workforce Development Council. Again, right person at the right place at the right time, fully engaged on STEM initiatives. We visited for a while about Northern State, and, you know, she remembered the push that the city made for the University of Washington branch campus.
Yeah.
Brought that up yesterday. Now, the success, though, is really the partnership. I mean, that's the key, is, you know, the Port of Skagit and Skagit County and the city, fully aligned with the state. And we had a, you know, the change in leadership at GA, now ES was very significant. And having all four corners moving together with really that, you know, unified vision, with the catalyst being Peter and Susie Janiki and their remarkable invention, you know, so it's, I don't think this is the sort of thing you could easily replicate.
No. Anyone else?
Well, I just didn't want to mention, isn't the tree lighting and the parade and all? I mean...
Saturday night.
Kids festivities. It starts at 5, right?
Well, I think kid activities and, you know, different, wagon rides downtown happen at 3, start at 3.
Okay.
Yeah. Go to that.
I just didn't want to forget to mention that.
Okay, well, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We got a motion to adjourn, second?
Yeah.
Okay, and all those in favor, stand. Thank you.
Yeah.